Almost ready.
You're almost ready?
Always ready.
Always.
She's ready.
Okay, everyone, the regular meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment for the Township of Belville for August 2nd, 2018 will come to order. Before we call the roll, we are going to swear in two members.
Could Gabrielle Mannick and Barbara Lozoff please stand and raise your right hand. Just repeat after me. You can do it. You can do it together. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Barbara Lozoff.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the same
To the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
And in the state and in the state under the authority of the people.
And in the state under the authority of the people.
Aye, and in the state you mean.
Aye, Barbara Lozoff.
Do further solemnly swear
Do further solemnly swear
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
Of the Board of Adjustment
Of the Board of Adjustment
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, Clerk call the roll.
Bennett?
Here.
Caruso?
Yep, here.
Gennado? Casa?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Lozoff?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Malano?
Yeah.
Del Gershio?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Madam Secretary has noticed that this meeting has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law.
The certification of the meeting has been advertised according to the Sunshine Law.
Has everyone looked at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve. Motion to approve made by Mr. Malano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk call the roll, except for Barbara and Gabby, because they were here last month.
Yes. Caruso?
Yep.
Casa?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Malano?
Yes.
Del Gershio?
Yes.
Okay. Applications for adjournment, I have three applications for adjournment. First one on the agenda is ZB 2018-04, 548-568 Franklin Avenue, Sound Development Limited Liability Corporation. Letter dated August 1st. Dear Chairman Del Gershio, please be advised that in an effort to reduce the parking variance to zero pertaining to the above zoning board matter, we are requesting an adjournment of tomorrow night's hearing to September 6th. As you might be aware, I have written to Mr. Steven Martino, Township Attorney, to inquire on the possibility of leasing a contiguous tract of property owned by the Township of Belville. We anticipate that within the next 30 days, we should be able to work out a prospective lease agreement which is satisfactory to all parties. As a result, we ask that this case be carried and that no new notice requirements be waived that no any new notice requirements be waived as they pertain to the adjournment request. Thank you for your courtesies, respectfully, Marina Ciperna, Attorney of Law. So anyone in the audience, ZB 2018-04 has been adjourned to September 6th, 2018. There will be no further notices either in the newspaper or by mail concerning that case until that night. Next case on the agenda, ZB 2017-24, 450-452 Washington Avenue, 450-52 Washington Avenue LP. I have a letter dated July 30th, 2018, to our secretary, Mrs. Chicorelli. I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above captioned matter. We are requesting that the application for 450-52 Washington Associates LP presently scheduled to be heard at the August 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the September 6th, 2018 meeting. The adjournment is being requested due to the need to revise the application materials to correctly reflect the current legal use of the property. As legal notice has already been provided in connection with this application, we respectfully request that the Chairman of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment permit the adjournment to the September 6th, 2018 meeting without further notice or an appearance on request of the applicant. In consideration for this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment request. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in this matter. Michael J. Palomari, Esquire.
My question is to our attorney, if there is a problem with the current legal use of the property, I think we should take a look at the notice that was sent to everybody and mailed to make sure there's no problem with that, that they don't know.
I think Michael wrote to me or emailed me on one of these adjournment requests, maybe this one, and he mentioned that very issue. I did, is this the one with, did you want to go through?
A business, a business and two apartments.
Yeah.
When it was turned out that legally it's a business and one apartment.
Yes. I looked at the notice, I read Mr. Piramoni's little letter, we discussed it, and in my opinion, the notice still covers what he wants to do.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no
All right. So now I can make that announcement. Anybody who's here for ZB 2017-24, 450-452 Washington Avenue, that is now adjourned to the September 6th, 2018 meeting. There will be no further notices either in the newspaper or by mail. And the last case on the agenda to be adjourned is ZB 2017-18, 3337 Rutgers Street, Parts Authority. That has a letter also dated July 30th, 2018, to Mrs. Chicorelli, Ms. Chicorelli. I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above captioned matter. We are requesting that the application for JAMS OLLC presently scheduled to be heard at the August 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the September 6th, 2018 meeting. The adjournment is being requested due to revisions to the plans being necessary following last month's meeting, which has not been completed. As additional variances have been noted as required, a fresh legal notice will be published and also mailed to property owners within 200 feet as required prior to the next hearing date. In consideration for this adjournment request, the application agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment request. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance, connection with this request. Now, I'm asking a question here. Since they're sending all new notice, because the notice is bad, does that mean that the time starts all over again?
Pretty much, yes.
So the waiver is not really necessary?
What they want to do now is different than what they're doing.
Okay.
It might be the clock will start.
All over again. Okay. Now, the only case left on the agenda, which I hope we will hear tonight, is 63 Franklin Avenue, St. Anthony's of Padua Church. The applicant is proposing to install an enclosed elevator, 49 square feet of addition on the eastern side of the church. Do we have an attorney for the church?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Donald Micelli, with the firm of Correll &amp; Byrne. We represent St. Anthony's Padua Church.
Counselor, could you just spell your last name again? I saw it.
Yes, M.I.C.E.L.I.
Thank you. I advise that notice and publication are in order.
Okay. Who may begin the case?
Okay. I'd like to call Mr. John Montoro.
Mr. Mr., just for a roadmap, who do you intend to call, just so we know?
Mr. Montoro.
That's it?
Yes.
Excuse me, could you put this on the other side so we can be video tips?
Yes. Yes, on this corner, please.
Let's take the flag. Anyone who wants to see this, please come up to the front, so you're not a, since there's hardly anybody here right now.
John, could you raise your right hand, please?
Yeah.
If you're hard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to show in court?
I do.
State your, spell your last name, please.
John Montoro, M.O.N.T.O.R.O.
Mr. Mr., I'm familiar with Mr. Montoro, but if you could further explain?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Montoro, I'm the president of the Montoro Architectural Group, and how long have you been with the company? 25 years.
Okay. And briefly give us your application background.
I'm licensed in both New York and New Jersey. I went to Pratt Institute. I've appeared, excuse me, I've appeared probably before 100 boards throughout the state of New Jersey and New York, and basically I've been doing this since 1986 when I first started my practice.
And I understand you've appeared and you've been qualified as an expert by Belville?
Plenty, plenty.
Well, you're a top head. As long as you still have your license, everything's okay.
And you're a licensed architect, I understand.
Yes.
Would you like to have him qualified as an expert?
Yes.
Are you familiar with St. Anthony's Padua Church, 63 Franklin Street?
Yes.
And did you make the physical inspection of the property and the surrounding area?
I've been there several times.
Okay. And were you engaged by the applicant of the church to provide architectural services relative to the addition of the church?
Yes, and the addition was started out as a small addition, but there's obviously handicap codes and other things that we're looking to be solved by this application.
Okay, and at this point, can you please describe in detail the current church and its environment, its environment and the proposed addition? And I'd like to
A1.
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 There's several drawings.
Mr. Rego, do you want A1 to be the entire drawings with references to the different numbers, or do you want it to be A1 and A2?
How many?
A1 for the package.
Yeah.
A1 for the package, do we have references to the drawings themselves?
Why don't we?
We probably have most of it, but let's do A1.
Nothing's changed, right?
Let's do A1.
No, just that drawing, this drawing and this drawing and this drawing are colorized.
Colorized. Why don't we mark the whole packet A1?
Yes. Okay. For the existing, okay. So in your packet, drawing PB1 shows the PB1 shows the existing conditions of the church, the existing conditions of the site, and in essence, if you know the church is built in, I believe, the early 1900s, there's a large set of steps to go up to the front doors, and primarily I was hired because they needed a way to bring, you know, the funerals, caskets in, that doesn't, you know, right now it's very dangerous bringing a casket in, up the steps and carrying up the steps, as well as for handicap purposes, handicap people, times have changed. We have codes now for handicaps, and even though they have a present lift, a handicap lift, it's gotten rusted over time, it doesn't work sometimes, and it's merely a lift. So trying to, how to say, kill three birds with one stone, we're meeting code, we're meeting the requirement to bring a casket for a funeral up, and also elderly people up during a funeral, but also meeting the needs for the daily services, which that floor level is up about almost 10 feet above grade level. So it's quite, it's not like we're going up a couple of steps. So the steps I'm talking about here are off of Franklin Street. They go up to a very short landing, and then there's doors to get into the church itself. The church has a basement, and it has a mezzanine. In the basement, there's a community room, a large community functional room, and there's also bathrooms. As part of this project, we're looking to also upgrade the handicap bathrooms the best we can within the 2-foot thick walls, and try to bring it up to somewhat of a handicap code situation. In addition, we're looking to add out at the existing, where the existing location is for the handicap lift, this is the handicap lift. And what we're trying to do is to add out in addition to, almost blend in with the church seamlessly. So originally, our job was to just add a small bump, put an elevator in, and call it a day. But when we started to do the design, then expand it to the basement, and then really to meet handicap code, you have to have access to all levels. So that means basement level, grade level, first floor sanctuary level, and loft, music choir level. So this is a four-stop elevator, okay? And because of the way it is, you'll see on the plans when we get further into it, the elevator has to be entered from one side and exit out to the other side to accommodate all the levels. So as far as the existing conditions go, the only thing we're touching within the church itself are the bathrooms in the lower level, and because of the configuration of the church, there's really only one spot to put the addition, okay? And there's really no other spot. The building itself is right up against property line, pretty much against street line, and this area is the only area that connects all four levels.
Okay. In addition, approximately how large is the addition of PB1?
And I think your notice had a little bit off on the numbers. I think something got misprinted there, but the So if you go to the drawing PB0A, pretty much shows, and this one in color, shows what we're kind of doing, okay? In answer to your question, Mr. Micelli, the addition itself is 498 square feet. We're taking off 45 square feet, which is the nave of the church at that same side. This little yellow area is 45 square feet. So in essence, we're adding a net area of 453 square feet now.
Okay. And approximately, in relation to the size of the building, approximately, in percentage, how large is the addition?
Okay, so the addition, the addition itself is, okay, so the existing building is 5,557 square feet, which compromises about 25.54% of the site. Site area is 21,758. We're proposing 6,010, which is 27.62%. So we're asking for a 2.08% increase, which is 453 square feet.
And in addition to the building that you're constructing, are you doing any side improvements?
Yes, actually quite a few side improvements, so
Kindly explain them.
Okay. So I think the better drawing to see the side improvements Yeah. PB0 PB0, what would, right now, it's hard, there's a lot going on with these drawings, and you almost have to let me explain it, so bear with me. We're not touching anything from this area
Back. When you say this area.
From the green island area that we're putting in on the new proposal
To the rear of the church.
To the rear of the church. So everything that we're talking about is towards the street to this island area. Presently, there are five parking spaces in line with the other parking spaces. So this parking row goes straight across, and those parking spaces go right back to this front, we call it planted area where we're inside. What we're proposing to do is to move the parking spaces out. Not past, not to, what we're doing is we're actually just flaring the curb a little bit where it enters in, putting the five parking spaces in a different configuration where we get two handicap spaces, because there's no, there's one handicap space that they call a handicap spacer, but it's not really a handicap space, and put true two spaces, which are van and handicap parking spaces. By doing and moving that out, when we put the addition on, we get like a plaza to one side of the addition, and a small plaza to the other side of the addition. So what that does is, when, if there's a funeral or a mass, the hearse can actually pull right up, they can come right in through the handicap curb cut and bring the casket right in. The elevator's appropriately sized to be able to handle a casket, they bring the casket into the elevator and go up to the main floor. People during a service, when they come out, instead of right now, when they come out, have to walk in the macadam area where cars are coming by. They now have a plaza area to wait for people to either come pick them up if they're elderly, or to continue down a sidewalk to get to the handicap, to get to the parking spaces. So it actually separates the cars from the people, it gives the people a place outside to congregate after service. You don't want to just go out and stand in the parking lot, which is not safe, but also it gives them the accessibility to come out into this part of the plaza, which is the north end, and be able to take the new sidewalk that connects back out to the street. So now, someone who's coming from the street to the church, or leaving the church to go to the street, doesn't have to walk out into the driveway entrance, can actually take the new pavement and get out to the sidewalk.
Is that designed as a safety feature?
Absolutely. It's, we're trying to meet not only safety, but handicapped parking, handicapped parking, accessibility, and delivery of caskets, and also assisting elderly people who can't make it up the steps.
And in designing this as an architectural expertise, is there any other location that this could have been put on the building brand that is pre-existing condition, and the building is already built?
No, because as I mentioned, it goes from four levels, it goes up to the choir. The choir area is only in the balcony, which is only in this front portion of the church.
So you wouldn't have been able to qualify under the ADA yet, or?
No, ADA, you have to meet all levels if it's feasibly possible to meet.
And kindly describe the surrounding area. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if you have any questions up to now, you can certainly ask them.
I have a quick question. On the handicapped parking spaces, how does the person get from there inside to that area you're just speaking about?
Well, this is a striped area, it's typical handicap spaces. There's a car, this right parking space would be for a handicapped person who drives.
Right.
The van space would be here, would be a handicap chair lift that goes into the van. And they would go in here through a curb cut, into these doors, into the lobby, and then into the elevator. Thank you. Go ahead.
And Mr. Montoro, describe the surrounding area. It's an Harvey zone, and I'd please describe the surrounding uses of the property.
Yeah, it's mixed of many, as you know, many different uses. There's apartments, there's retail, there's restaurants, there's, basically it's a non-conforming existing church. And, you know, it's, how would I say, it's in a downtown area, it's tight, it's zero lot lines, and it's a mixture of different uses in the area.
And you're familiar with the master planning design, or
Yeah.
The rules of having up here before, what Can you kindly describe these variants, sort of, one is a D variant, which is an expansion of a non-conforming use? Can you kindly explain what special reasons exist for bringing of that?
Yeah. So obviously, this is a non-conform
If I may.
Yes.
Has he testified as an architect or as a planner?
He is both.
I'm sorry, did you qualify him as both?
Both.
I heard him as qualified
I thought he was an architect.
I heard him qualified as an architect.
I know John's a planner as well.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not a licensed planner.
Oh, you're not?
No.
No, not as a licensed planner, but as an architect, we all inherently have
You have qualified.
Planning experience, right?
Yes.
And I know you've testified many times as a planning consultant as well.
A planning consultant, yes.
He's not a, his license was granted via, after the day, he qualified.
That's correct.
Right. I didn't really
I'm sorry, I didn't make that
I just wanted to show me, yeah, that I'm a, that he's qualified in, in planning testimony.
I understand, Mr. Mr.
Thank you.
Okay, so the positive special reasons were obviously had safety, pedestrian access, handicapped accessibility and safety for fire, all those things that we just talked about, okay? Promotes the public health and welfare, and adds to the pedestrian-friendly sidewalk and accessibility. It actually connects, this addition actually now connects to the public way, which we were as before within it. Provides more open space, we obviously have new pavement plazas, instead of having macadam plazas that were only there before. When you walked out of the church, either you stood on the steps, or you were on the street. This conforms to the intent of the master plan and enhances the neighborhood.
And with respect to the C variants, as you mentioned, the C variants is there, I believe, are lot covered?
Yes, there is a lot coverage variance, and a solid existing, solid, solid variance, yeah. We're at zero lot line, so that doesn't change, nothing changes though. The lot coverage, I didn't tell everyone about what we're going for for lot coverage, or how we got there.
2%.
It's 1.6%, actually. So just let me explain that, so we, because that's really the main issue of this whole application. So So if we go to PB0A, what you'll see there is a chart with the areas. We went over the building area, the landscape area, we're actually demolishing 420 square feet of landscaping, and we're adding 60 square feet, so we're basically demolishing 360 square feet of landscaping. The net, the net added in pervious, that we're displacing for building and pavement, and the actual pervious areas that we're actually adding is 360 square feet. So it's basically 360 square feet of landscaping, but the building itself is 498. So we're actually adding about 28% less than if it was 498 square feet of just building into a pervious area.
If we can now.
Because we're also adding some greenery back, okay? So we're not just, we're not just adding 100% building and saying that's the end of the landscaping, okay? So that equates to 360 square feet, equates to 1.6% increase, and that is the reason we're before this board, okay? Basically for the 1.6%.
And Mr. Montoro, are you familiar with the negative criteria of the exception? And we have an opinion regarding whether the variants should be granted or deployed, they have no such thing as a detriment of the public good and the
Yeah, actually, I don't, I really, looking at this, I really don't see any negative other than we're taking away some landscaped area other than we're taking away some landscape area. But if we compare the amount of landscape area that we're taking away and the amount of open space for people that we're adding, it's not like we're taking away for building, that's what I'm getting at. We're taking away landscape area to provide for open plazas for people. So, to me, that's a positive. I think on this whole project, the positives severely outweigh the negatives, and the variances are minor variance. And approving this variance will not negatively impact the adjacent properties or the health and welfare of the area.
Okay. And based on your planning experience and your expertise, you believe that the variances or warrants should be approved?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Any questions by members of the board?
I have one question. I'm just curious about the mechanicals for the elevator. Is this going to be a hydraulically lifted elevator?
Yes, it's hydraulic, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, all the mechanicals will be in the base?
In the building itself.
John, I'm assuming that you looked at the letter report of Mr. Harris, our board planner and engineer, and Mr. Di Lorenzo last year wrote a letter, and he had some comments and suggestions. Assuming you have no problem?
Are you talking about March 29th? March 29th or the 17th?
March 31st. He had recommendations regarding a grading plan, soil erosion, seepage pit.
Yeah. Here's, to be honest, okay?
That's the best policy.
So, the, kind of the reason we did what we did, I, we obviously could have gone and gotten the whole site engineer, plant a site engineer, and we were trying to save our client, who's the archdiocese and actually the church, who's paying for it, their money, okay? So, the site's a flat site. We're really not doing too much here, you know? So, to answer these questions, grading plan must be submitted for review. Project drains must be addressed. Soil erosion sediment approved and the soil conservation issue, we're not really disturbing more than 5,000 square feet. A seepage pit, you know, like, we're figuring like 360 square feet. We will do that if you want us, we would get an engineer to do that, because I'm not a licensed engineer. But I think all the drainage goes the same way. The, you know, the grades are flat. I mean, we're talking about a grain of, you know, a quarter of a foot, you know? It's like from one elevation to the next. It's up to you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The best way to handle it is, you know, let him have a conference with Mr. Harris. If Mr. Harris is not satisfied with his suggestions or his opinions, then something else, it's going to be conditioned upon...
Mr. Harris approval.
Right.
And Frank, Frank had most of his comments. Yeah. He discussed it with them.
You know, you know, let them make their decision. They'll have the ability to stop it if they feel that strongly. But as far as they...
Yeah.
We're not, we're not, we're not the experts in those fields.
That's right.
We're only the expert in one field, and that's whether we show a lot of project going forward. But how it's, the mechanical way addressed is up to them. So, I say we can improve the usage, it has to be up to them to pull them on.
We'll make that a condition of approval, assuming the board approves it, that we can refer with our consultants upon those issues.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public? Yes, Mr. Malafuji, come right up, please. Come up. Any questions, if people have to come up so they can see in the camera?
Just two questions, yes. Where is the new curb cut compared to the current curb cut?
You turn about the entrance off of Franklin? So, we superimposed on PB0, you might want to take a look closer. We superimposed the new over the existing, the best we could. Basically, what happens is it comes in and it bulbs out so that these spaces align with the edge of the curb. So, they're not, these spaces are not sticking out. So, it's basically a flare at the entrance.
And my other question is, would you have taken away some of the new space?
Yes.
What's, what's in that new space now?
What's, no, no. It's pretty brown. No, there's just some bushes, some, a little bit of everything.
It's plant-like.
It's plant-like, yeah, okay. That's a good...
Not a tree.
That's a technical term. There are a couple of trees, yes, in this area. We're not taking away all of these, only where the addition is, okay? So, this, all will stay the same, and we're adding more in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other member of the public has any questions? Is that your...
That's our presentation.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to give testimony on this application? No? Okay, then, you wish to sum up?
Do you have a summation or you don't?
No, I don't.
Is that...
Done. Okay. Gentlemen and ladies, your pleasure. I will let Mr. Valano talk, because he can't wait to...
No, I mean, for me, anytime you make a site safer, more conducive to elderly and the handicapped, you know, for me, it's a no-brainer.
I agree.
And we're not losing any parking spaces, which is key for that neighborhood.
And it's good that now they have handicap accessibility to the home.
To the home premises.
Yes.
Which they didn't have before.
Which they didn't have.
So, for me, I can, it's a worthwhile project.
I agree. So, I consider this project as a win-win for everybody.
Exactly.
So, do I get a motion to approve with the condition?
Motion to approve with the condition of Mr. Harris and Mr. Di Lorenzo's agreement to the questions being satisfied.
With that, yeah, whatever Frank told, what's in there, two reports.
And the reports, questions are satisfied. If they are not, then we'll report back.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Now, motion's made by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. You have a... I got it. You got it. Okay. Clerk, go to roll.
Bennett. Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Delgarcia.
Yes.
Who? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll have a resolution in some time. I want to point out to everybody, a copy of the New Jersey Planner, which is in your packet this month. It has the mandatory classes, which I believe you're conducting one of them?
In the floor, not these.
Oh, not these ones. I don't think so, not both. Four for rockets. Four for rockets, okay. And as you know, you have a year and a half from when you're appointed to get certified. So, I want to bring that to new members' attention. And is there anything else on the agenda or off the agenda you want to add new business? Okay, then, nothing? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, approved. We are adjourned.